Test, test. That's too high. Testing one-two. Testing one-two. Testing one-two, testing one-two.
Yeah, you just... Yeah, alright. Ready? Alright. We're gonna call the, um, special finance committee meeting, um, for public hearing on Cook County Health and Hospital System budget, uh, to order, or are we continuing from the last meeting?
We are reconvening.
We're reconvening, we're reconvening. Alright. Um, first thing I'm gonna do is, oh, I'm, you know, I'm looking at my cheat sheet here and it's like, did that section? I wasn't reading the right section.
Sorry.
Jerry, uh, will the secretary please call it all?
And I believe we're just taking it for attendance purposes for the record.
Yes.
We don't need a quorum, so I'll just announce those who are present.
Sounds good.
Uh, Director Harrington. And Director Kim. Chair writer.
Here.
And remotely present, we've got Commissioner Lowry. And Director Masuda Barnett.
Alright. Great. Before, um, we do the review of the budget presentation, since we have, I believe, folks here to do, um, to provide public testimony, I am going to, um, start with public testimony. Do we have any written testimonies for today's hearing?
We've received three written testimonies. One from Dr. Kenneth Soyemi, from Jeremy Foster, uh, Big Brothers Big Sisters of Metropolitan Chicago, and Dominique Chu from Center for Housing and Health.
Alright, we will, um, we'll receive those and we, uh, will circulate them and post, do we post them to the website?
Yes, and they're made part of the meeting minutes.
Okay, great. Um, and then, do we have, uh, registered in-person speakers?
We do.
Alright. Uh, let's, uh, let's start with the in-person speakers. Each speaker has three minutes and, um, for those of you doing, uh, providing testimony today, uh, the, uh, board secretary will, uh, remind the speaker when there's one minute left and again when the time has expired.
Uh, the first speaker, I believe that we are going to have a Spanish language translator. Are you present, translator? Hello, sir. Um, so the first speaker is Saída Martinez, and if you can step to the podium, please.
Gracias. Hola, buenas tardes.
Thank you, good afternoon.
Hola primera.
I'm the first one.
Mi nombre es Saída Martinez y soy supervisora de un equipo de promotoras de salud de la organización de Enlace Chicago.
My name is Saída Martinez, I'm a supervisor for, um, it's a CHW, Enlace Chicago.
Hace veinticinco años, cuando llegué a este país, enfrenté muchos miedos y barreras para tener acceso a cuidados de salud.
More than, um, more than twenty-five years ago, when I came to this country, I, I, um, I faced many fears and barriers to, to have access to, uh, health care in the city.
Pensaba que por ser inmigrante no tenía derecho a recibir servicios de salud de calidad por mi situación.
I was under the impression that because I'm an immigrant, I did not have the rights to receive services of, of health care, uh, in this, in this city because of my situation.
Ahora soy una promotora de salud y me esfuerzo por llevar educación y prevención a mi comunidad que como yo pensaban que no teníamos derecho.
Now I am, I am a voice for health care, uh, with all my strength to try and, and continue to educate and also to help with prevention in my community. Uh, that's the way I think and that's why I feel now I have these rights.
Una promotora de salud es una persona que crea lazos de comunicación y construye puentes de confianza para las personas que buscan de nuestros servicios crean en nosotros.
A person that is a voice for health care is a person that creates, uh, uh, lassos for the communication and also constructs, uh, bridges for confidence so that all the people that need, that need our services can, 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 can receive these services for, with our help and because they're also part of this community.
Ya, somos parte de una misma comunidad. Nos vemos igual. Somos iguales, somos todos seres humanos.
We all are the same. We are human beings and we're all part of the same community.
Tener fondos para nuestros programas es fundamental para poder seguir llevando esperanza, de amor y cuidados a muchas familias que como yo alguna vez necesitaron de una mano amiga que me enseñara, por ejemplo, cómo es el sistema de salud de este país.
To have funds for, for our programs is fundamental so that we can continue to have hope, a love, and also to take care of all the families like my, like mine. Uh, it's also necessary that we also have a, give a hand, a helping hand for, as an example, about how this system of health works in this country.
Recuerdo que mi primer clínica fue Jorge Prieto.
I also recall that my first clinic was Jorge Prieto.
Y estoy agradecida por los servicios y el tiempo que me brindaron.
And I'm also appreciative of all the services and all the help they were able to supply.
Pero ahora sé que hubo cosas que pudieron haber sido mejor para mis cuidados de salud.
But I also am aware that there were other, other services that could have helped me more in question regards to my health.
Por eso estamos aquí ahora, las promotoras de salud.
That's why we're here as voices for health care.
Me gustaría, por ejemplo, que todo el personal que trabaja ahí en la clínica tenga la empatía de vernos como seres humanos.
I would like that all the people in the clinic that have the same sympathy and empathy to see all of us as, as equal human beings.
Porque ya de por sí ahora estamos enfrentando duras batallas por el clima político que se vive, que muchos vamos con miedo al idioma, al cambio de cultura, etc.
And especially now that we're trying to face these difficult political climates that we are, we are living in and it's also with a lot of fear of, of our, of our restrictions with our language and also the change of, of cultures.
El sistema de salud del condado de Cook podría tomar la oportunidad de tener promotoras de salud en las clínicas para que se conecten con las comunidades donde brindan su servicio.
Also, in, in regards to the Cook County healthcare system, we could take this opportunity to be able to be a voice for health care in the clinics that we, that we help out at and also to connect with the community so that we can get, we can offer the services that are needed, for example.
Por ejemplo, nosotras participamos en varios eventos como feteas de salud, regresos a clases, y no solamente damos volantes de información. Nos damos el tiempo de platicar con las personas compartiendo situaciones que nos unen o nos conectan.
And also, we not only, uh, include ourselves in various events like healthcare fairs and also return to classes, but also that we are, are, we give information. We take our time to talk with the people so that we can share our situations and also connect so that we can offer them a, a voice and all the, and all the necessities that they need.
Tenemos que aprender a escuchar las necesidades de las personas para que basado en eso podamos buscar los recursos que podemos brindar.
We have to listen to these people and their voices so that we can also help with any sort of recourse or any sort of, uh, ideas that we can help bring to the table.
Pardon me, pardon me, you have left, a little bit less than a minute left.
Ya, no, ya vamos a terminar.
You're almost done.
Ya es lo último. Esto quiere decir que cualquier persona que trabaje, ya sea para la clínica Jorge Prieto, hospitales, o en cualquier otra área del, del sistema de salud de Cook debe conocer y respetar el lugar de trabajo que representa porque así es como se gana la confianza de las personas que queremos alcanzar.
And so I just wanna say to summarize that whatever person that works and also helps out in clinics like Jorge Prieto and hospitals and whatever other, uh, healthcare of Cook County system that there is to offer, clinic or hospital, they have to know and also respect our place in the workplace and also know that we represent, uh, the, the people that are able to gain confidence for the people that need, that need our help.
Muchas gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for my time.
Thank you.
The next speaker, I don't believe is here, but I'll call her name is Ilda Hernández. Okay, the next speaker is Alexis Rosales.
Hello, uh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Sorry?
Good afternoon.
Oh, sorry. Um, good afternoon. My name is Alexis Rosales and I'm a rising senior at New York University and I am here representing the Seventh District Task Force, a group of more than a hundred advisors from fifty-plus organizations, direct care providers and activists from the southwest side of Chicago that was founded over ten years ago. The Health Task Force meets quarterly to discuss the state of our public health systems, its programs and areas of interest and improvements. The goal of the Seventh District Health Task Force is to make sure that the Cook County Health, also known as CCH, is accessible to residents, many more immigrants, and that the CCH stays true to its promise of providing quality care and making available a wide variety of healthcare services regardless of one's ability to pay. We expect to honor tradition that recognizes that healthcare is a fundamental human right to everyone. Following the principle, the Seventh District Health Task Force supports a county health system budget that not only celebrates major accomplishments to our communities, but also confronts the deep inequalities that persist in our healthcare system. We strongly believe that the budget must continue to fund and expand critical services such as mental health care, dental services, community health workers and public outreach. Specifically, we urge the Board of Directors to address the shortages of physicians at the Dr. Jorge Prieto Health Center, a vital clinic in our district. At our most recent Health Task Force meeting, members voiced concerns over the decline in both services and physicians at the Prieto Clinic, which has led to a noticeable drop in patient use. From 2019 to 2025, the number of senior physicians dropped from five to two. This lack of community impacts quality care, patient trust and ultimately, health outcomes. We call for dedicated funding in this budget to hire and retain more full-time senior physicians at the Prieto Clinic. Additionally, we encourage investments in community health workers who can bridge the gap between patient and providers, improve follow-up care and strengthen community trust in our public health system. We also request greater transparency regarding history available in the ambulatory care and community network.
One minute remaining.
So that residents clearly understand the available services and how to access them and whether they are meeting community needs. Access to oral healthcare services must be easy, affordable and communicated widely to all Cook County health patients, but especially the residents of the southwest side of Chicago. Furthermore, we encourage expanded outreach efforts so that the Prieto Clinic is not only a healthcare provider, but also a visible and trusted source of community engagement. One that actively works to bring residents into care before health concerns become emergencies. Finally, we urge a direct, a direct and stronger focus on mental health services, ensuring that the community has access to support, counseling and crisis care that it needs. The Seventh District Health, Health Task Force believes that addressing these issues is not optional. It is essential to delivering on the promise of equitable, accessible and quality healthcare for all residents. I urge the Board of Directors to take these concerns seriously and appropriately address them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anna Irving.
Good afternoon. My name's Anna Irving. I'm the Regional Director with Asme Council Thirty-One and I'm here tonight to ask that the fiscal year twenty-six CCH budget include a plan for phasing out the Guide House contract so that the work currently performed by that corporation be performed not by the exploited workers it employs in India, but by Cook County residents earning a living, union wage. So the CCH Board knows that Asme fought against contracting out work at the hospital and the Guide House contract is a very graphic example of this contracting out. It's a sixteen point three million dollar contract. It expires next spring, so we have an opportunity. Of the two-hundred-and-eighty-six full-time equivalent employees under that contract, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven of them work quote-unquote offshore. And let me explain what that means. In the Guide House contract, Guide House explains the majority of resources will be located at lower-cost offshore locations, i.e. India, Philippines. We think this contract is counter to the Cook County Board resolution that the hospital bring work in-house. We think it's contrary to the leadership of our Cook County Board who believes strongly in giving people living wages and in not eroding union contracts. We're gonna keep up our, uh, fight against Guide House specifically and contracting in general, but we ask that the Board have a plan to address this contract in this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
The next speaker is Monica Fox.
Good evening. I'm Monica Fox and I'm a kidney disease survivor who has experienced dialysis and transplant. And I'm the Vice President of Government Relations and External Affairs for the National Kidney Foundation of Illinois. Since thirty-seven million adults have kidney disease and ninety percent don't know it, our mission is to improve the health and well-being of people at risk for or affected by kidney disease through prevention, education and empowerment. For prevention, we have our Kidney Mobile where we go throughout Illinois partnering with community organizations to do free testing for high blood pressure, diabetes and kidney disease. You may have seen the orange Sprinter van somewhere around town. For education, we provide free programming for people living with or affected by kidney disease. For advocacy, we work with our legislators to develop policies that help kidney patients and we work with groups like the Cook County Community Advisory Board. African-Americans are four times more likely to have kidney disease than Hispanics are two and a half times more likely. Therefore, many of our constituents are African-American and Hispanic and are some of the same patients that are served by the Cook County Health System. Therefore, working with several community advisory boards benefits us as it increases our awareness of the programs available to support them, particularly mental health services and dental services. Um, we were the beneficiaries of prior funding from the Cook County Department of Public Health that allowed us to provide our program Take Charge and Community Health Talk to different communities within Cook County. As a result, we continue to partner with numerous community organizations through our Cook County Health Association. This allows us to spread our message and our work further.
One minute remaining.
The work that is being done by Cook County Health and Cook County Department of Public Health is important to the constituents that we serve and therefore important to us. We value the mission of Cook County Health and are grateful the work and the importance of partnership and support to advance kidney health is acknowledged through the Cook County Health System. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to these.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dr. Natasha Bayani.
Hello, my name is Dr. Natasha Bayani and I'm a pediatrician at La Rubita Children's Hospital. If you're not familiar with La Rubita, it is in Jackson Park and it's a clinic geared for kids with special needs. Not just physical disabilities such as cerebral palsy or G-tube dependence or ventilator dependence, but also mental health disabilities as well. We see kids with anxiety and depression, which we know a lot of our children suffer from, but also more complex things such as complex trauma. The number of kids I have in my clinic who have suffered, family members who suffer from gun violence, um, or have incarcerated family members, or have housing or food insecurity. Kids with autism, kids with traumatic brain injuries. So these are kids who've been in car accidents or have had, um, child abuse and afterwards they have challenges with their behavior, impulsivity, attention issues, learning issues. And ninety-nine percent of our patients are Medicaid and most of the schools that these kids attend are unfortunately underfunded and under-resourced. I was hearing day in and day out from these families that their children aren't getting the services that they need in schools. From simple things like speech therapy to social work supports to not being able to get their child special education services. And I was having parents who were losing their jobs because they had to go pick their children up from work. Uh, sorry, pick their children up from school because the schools couldn't handle their behavior. And when I would ask them, does the school have a behavior plan in place? They'd say no, because they never knew to ask and the school didn't offer. I had kids who didn't go to school because they lose their bus services and the parents don't know how to get them back. And I can, I can do many things, but I am not a special education expert. And so we applied to Cook County for the Stronger Together Grant and we were awarded money to hire full-time, two full-time school liaisons who are integrated into my primary care clinic. So when I go down to see a patient in clinic and there's a concern for the school, I can call the liaison down and we're able to connect the medical field as well as the education that the child is getting. We get to communicate with the schools, school liaison, go to the school meetings with the families, they attend IEP meetings, they go over their special education rights. Um, they are connecting families with the Illinois State Board of Education or equipped for equality if need be. We've been able to attend over two-hundred-and-fifty meetings with our parents and support them in their IEP meetings. We've been able to get seventy-five kids new IEPs and five O four plans. We've been able to adjust seventy-five IEP media, uh, IEP services for kids in our clinic and it's been immensely helpful. Some examples are...
Sorry, one minute remaining.
Sure. One, a couple of examples are two twins with autism who are non-verbal, who needed a communication device and the school hadn't, hadn't thought to evaluate them. And so we got our school liaison involved and now the children are getting communication devices so they can communicate. We had a child who had suffered from severe bullying and was not wanting to go to school. Got our school liaison involved and they were able to create a safety plan with the school. So these are immensely helpful supports and I encourage the Board of Directors to continue funding for the Stronger Together Grant for the next fiscal year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrea Munoz. This is Munoz. He is not present. The next speaker is Beth Keneffick.
Good afternoon. My name is Beth Keneffick and I'm the Director of Policy at the Greater Chicago Food Depository. We work closely with Cook County Health to alleviate hunger in the county. We know that one crucial element to preventative care is nutrition and at the food depository, we believe a healthy community starts with food. According to a Feeding America study, one in seven people in Cook County is at risk of food insecurity meaning they struggle to access the nutritious food they need to live a healthy life. Even one is too many. Inadequate food access has dire consequences on morbidity, mortality and the overall health and well-being of children and families. It has been a challenging few years for many of our neighbors. Due to inflation, elevated food prices and the rollback of crucial pandemic-era public assistance programs such as SNAP, many families find it hard to put healthy nutritious food on the table. And unfortunately, these challenges will exacerbate with the passage of the new federal reconciliation bill. For each meal the Feeding America Network food bank serves across the country, SNAP provides nine. New catastrophic cuts to SNAP and Medicaid mean the need for food will rise for quite some time. The food depository is proud to have partnered with Cook County Health over the past eleven years in several important programs. Together, we have incorporated food insecurity screenings at all Cook County Health outpatient health centers. Patients who screen positive for food insecurity receive valuable information and resources to access healthy food, including a list of locations where emergency food is available and a referral to our SNAP hotline to apply for nutrition benefits. Patients at Belmont Craig and just recently Providence Hospital have access to an onsite pantry. Between April and June alone, there were two-hundred-and-ninety-two patient visits to the onsite pantry at the Belmont Craig and Clinic. Of those patients, over sixty percent experienced improved blood pressure... Of those patients, over sixty percent experienced improved blood pressure and H1C levels as they worked to develop health goals and more consistent access to healthy food. Providence Onsite Pantry just opened on July eighteenth, and the number of visits from the first week to the third have already tripled. In addition, we have partnered with the Lifestyle Center at Providence Hospital and the Cottage Grove Health Center to identify cohorts of Cook County Health patients experiencing food insecurity while managing chronic health conditions. Through this collaboration, eligible patients receive a weekly delivery of nutritious scratch-made frozen meals for six months-
One minute remaining.
-supporting both their health and well-being. Our partnership also thrives through collaborative policy efforts, particularly within coalitions like the Alliance for Health Equity and Protect Care Illinois. It has also been wonderful to see our partnership grow to more patient-centered models that can sustainably address food insecurity. The Food Depository wishes to thank the Board of Directors for their leadership and commitment to ending hunger in Cook County. As you continue with the fiscal year budget process, we urge you to continue investing in the important work that we have achieved together. The Food Depository is committed to this partnership to ensure that everyone in Cook County has access to nutritious food that they need to thrive. We cannot do this alone, and we are truly grateful for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Chris Dunn.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Dunn. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Lawndale Christian Health Center. I've lived on Chicago's West Side, the Little Village neighborhood, for twenty-seven years, and I'm coming up on my twenty-fourth work anniversary at Lawndale. I'm here today to learn my voice in support of the County Care Health Plan and share some of the ways it's allowed us to care for our neighbors. A little bit about Lawndale Christian Health Center, we're a federally qualified health center with ten locations across Chicago's South and West Side. And as of last month, we're now providing primary care to thirty of the forty homeless shelters across the city. Seventy-five thousand patients consider us their medical home. Twenty-five percent of those are county care members, and another twenty-five percent are uninsured Cook County residents. Our definition of wellness goes beyond the exam room, includes a team of care managers, dental, optometry, behavioral health, and an SUD, or Substance Use Disorder Clinic, and some more niche ventures such as a fitness center, a collaboration with the Chicago Tannin Garden, and a farm on Ogden that we call our veggie prescription program, and a family medicine residency where we train doctors in our primary care setting. This summer, we graduated our first class of residents who are now equipped to care for our neighbors with culturally competent expertise that's uniquely developed by honing their craft in our clinics and our shelters. Our work in the shelters and with patients wrestling with addiction pushed the use of long-acting injectables to the top of our priority list. It is a high-touch, highly relational treatment that comes with significant savings and life-altering outcomes. These are the patients that you're going to see on your high cost and high utilizer reports. We connect these patients to community, and our transitions care team ensures that when they are hospitalized, we can get them connected to primary care quickly and efficiently. I share this because we're just one of sixteen other health centers and hospitals who've partnered together under the umbrella that we call Medical Home Network Accountable Care Organization, or MHN, ACO for short. Every one of our MHN partners is just as passionate about providing quality, community-based, whole-person care as we are. And we couldn't have done any of this without the commitment of the Cook County Health Board and the CCH leadership. It's also no secret that recent legislation changes has meant that we've lost over eleven-hundred county care members from our roster with the termination of the health benefits for immigrant adults and seniors.
One minute remaining.
All of our partners have seen similar impact on their memberships, some even higher than ours. You can rest assured that we're going to continue to care for these patients. They're still our neighbors, and they deserve the care that we can provide. But it makes this season and this budget and the investment it represents particularly significant. Thank you, Cook County Health Board of Directors, for your commitment to the County Care Health Plan and to our safety net community. Your support makes this work and the care that our neighbors receive possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Susan Avila.
Hi, Sue. Maybe you can stay in the room. I will.
Thank you. Okay. Hi. Good evening. My name is Sue Avila, and I'm here representing the Collaborative for Health Equity, Cook County. It has been nearly eleven years since I retired from my role as a registered nurse with the Department of Trauma, yet the numbers of our people without access to high-quality medical care remain unacceptable and will only worsen with the recent federal budget. Cook County Health has a new CEO, an apparently balanced budget, positive trends in some graphs, and commendable leadership from the Board and Commissioners Lowry and Anaya. Yet, this does not mean all is well. To many of us, the flaws of the foundation of county health are glaring. Cook County is one of the most diverse regions in the nation. Unfortunately, our health system leadership often fails to show up for immigrant communities that depend on us. When other jurisdictions take bold steps to protect access, Cook County Health hesitates. That's not leadership, that's avoidance, and our patients are paying the price. Efforts to improve problems are often bungled, leading, for example, to the loss of major grants and programs from our core center. This threatens HIV care and research, especially in our southern suburbs. Simultaneously, we've seen an explosion of highly-paid C-level positions, many held by individuals who do not reflect the cultural, racial, or linguistic diversity of our residents. Every dollar spent on executive who doesn't understand our communities is a dollar not invested in nurses, physicians, interpreters, and outreach workers. Feedback from the Cook County Health Immigration Task Force formed through community action indicates that meetings are often held only once a month, with no sustained agenda, uneven follow-ups, and little clinic or data-driven reporting. Meanwhile, the system reports uncertainty about no-show rates, yet clinics such as Lawndale Christian and in Lase Legal Clinic, along with many other FQHCs, report rising no-show rates. This discrepancy is concerning. I urge this Board to look deeply into how this budget aligns with values: invest in community-based care, diversified leadership, taking bold public stands to ensure all residents, regardless of immigration status, receive timely, respectful, and comprehensive healthcare. Finally, I urge this Board to embrace a renewed approach to leadership, one that welcomes discussion and debate, promotes transparency, and does not hide problems. As our region faces an uncertain future, courageous leadership from the Board of Directors is crucial. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Paula Hollingsworth.
Hello. I'm Paula Hollingsworth. I'm also a caseworker here at Stroja Hospital in Room 1290, the follow-up team. And I'm here with all of my fellow workers at AFSME. We're here because the Guide House is taking all our jobs, and we want them to be disassembled because they are not in our best interest, and they're not in the interest of our patients. Okay? We have long lines of patients, outstanding patients awaiting time periods, overworking the workers because there's a shortage where they are hiring more management for them and not hiring staff to help assist the patients here on site. We also not getting the reports, they sabotaging our work to us because they're not giving us our reports that we had been working on before to get the money. We would like a main report, fat report, all of those type of reports, we're not getting any longer. So, they're sending them out to their people to work on, and then when they come back, we have to clean up behind them. So, we're getting on the back end of trying to deal with, we have to talk with the Department of Human Services directly a lot of times. So, we have to clean up a lot of what they messing up. So, they're just here for the dollars and not for the people. We're here for the people. It's a difference. We're here as workers trying to represent our peoples in the community. They're here for the dollar signs. So, that's what I just want to speak on. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Coretta Boykins.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Coretta Boykins, and I've been a caseworker here at Cook County for ten years. I'm here also, along with my cohort, to discuss the concerns we have with Guide House. Managerial staff from Guide House have implemented processes and practices that are sabotaging and securing funding for Medicaid and managed care. Barbara Hernandez, Pemba Bulong, Jacqueline Rodriguez, who is no longer here, and Melissa Torres are current managers from Guide House who do not possess the educational attainment nor managed care concepts to lead staff. During their time here, neither of them had implemented a process that would increase financial gain to the healthcare system. They have compromised integrity of the previous process in place. We are constantly spinning our wheels to correct mistakes by Guide House. Patients' wait times, as my cohort has mentioned, have increased from thirty minutes to three hours or more. Their idea of bringing in revenue is to provide care link with, which is the hospital charity program. There is no accountability for them, just a sixteen million dollar contract. With the current administration in the White House, it is imperative that the finance department has staff in place who possess the skills and knowledge base needed to secure funding and implement processes to aid in keeping CCH uprooted. For that reason, I urge you not to approve Guide House contract for the next fiscal year. Hire staff who are not only able to contribute to our pension, but also take pride in their work and service to our patients. Please, I urge you not to renew Guide House contract. Thank you for your time and your ear, and have a good evening.
The next speaker is Jocelyn Fielder. Ms. Fielder, are you present? Okay, the next speaker is Wendy Fowler. Wendy Fowler, are you present? Okay, that concludes the registrations.
All right. Before we go into our report on the budget, I just want to thank all of our speakers today. Everything from the offers of support to, I think, important criticism on what we do and what we could do better, I believe is important. In particular, I also had a lot of concerns over the Guide House contract that we recently entered into, and I know it's something that we're going to be continuing to talk about on our monthly reports on our contracting out, which Guide House was added to, I believe, either our last meeting or the meeting before, where it's now being counted as part into the mix with all of our other contracting out to continue to lower it. And one of the ways we're going to do that is through reviewing this contract and seeing what changes need to happen in that area of billing, regardless of who's doing it, to make sure that we're investing in our people that work here at Cook County Health. Now, I'd like to, I believe, Scott, you're doing the presentation today? We're now going to receive our overview of the budget presentation being offered by Scott Spencer, Associate CFO, and Joseph, I don't know if, I'm going to take a stab at this, Francois? All right, I got it. It's Francois, Budget Director, to do an overview of the presentation.
All right. Thank you. So, we're going to start with, so, excuse me, Scott Spencer, Associate CFO for CCH. First slide here is our agenda, so we'll be starting with our FY25 accomplishments and FY26 key initiatives. We'll go through some of our historical trends, and then we'll get into the FY26 budgets of the Health Fund and the Special Purpose Funds. Next slide. All right, so there's lots of awards and accreditations and recognitions listed here. I'm not going to read through all of them, but wanted to highlight some of those that are more directly budget-related in terms of expansion, growth, and optimization and other efficiency efforts that have been accomplished over the past year. So, starting on the left-hand side, we've converted close to two hundred agency positions to fill vacancies. New Bronzeville Health Center has been opened. We've opened the Clinical Triage and Stabilization Center at Providence Hospital. We've opened dental services at North Riverside. We've executed agreement with Loyola Health System to expand county care network, and added seven hundred new providers. Launched birthday health screenings to promote streamlined access to low- and no-cost mammograms. We added a new primary care slot utilization metric to value-based care measures, improved IT service management system, and increased the number of county care members filling their prescriptions with CCH pharmacies. Moving on. Next slide, please. So, looking at our 2026 key initiatives, and again, there's a lot here, but focusing on those that are more directly impacting the FY26 budget. So, we've made progress in reducing the vacancy rates and reduced agency utilization, or be continuing to work towards that initiative in '26. Continue to focus on retention programs to maintain low turnover, implement performance and process improvement initiatives throughout the organization, enter into additional value-based care contracts to drive higher-quality outcomes, and improve and maintain a positive operating margin through denial reduction, increased claim submissions, and other billing opportunities. Next slide. So, this slide shows our budget FTE fluctuations and trend over the last decade. You can see that we're budgeting an increase of one hundred and ten FTEs from '25 to '26, which is primarily related to bringing previously RPA-funded positions onto the Health Fund. And we'll talk more about that in later slides. Our next slide here, the volume trend slide, it's kind of a busy slide here, but it does show our trends over the last several years. Some of those areas where we've seen some steady growth, others have remained flat, and others have shown some declines. Next slide. So, as we turn to focus on the federal and state funding cuts that are impacting us financially, starting on the left, we do have the HBIA, so the health benefits for immigrant adults, which is an estimated impact of about one hundred and ten million, and that is included in our fiscal '26 budget. The looming DISH cuts that we are eagerly awaiting some congressional action in the fall of 2025, so just in a couple of months where we will know at that point whether or not Congress will continue to delay those cuts. And then, the couple of items coming through the federal budget bill, the Medicaid work requirements, so an estimated ten percent of individual losing coverage and eighty-eight million dollar reduction, and then the Medicaid redetermination being increased, or decreased, rather, from twelve months to a process that would occur every six months. And so, there's an estimated fifty million dollar impact there as well. So, the compounding effects at the bottom of the slide there would be more uninsured patients, a higher demand for care at CCH, increased charity care costs, and then the effects to, the potential effects to social service programs, impact- um, and then the effects to, uh, the potential effects to social service programs, um, impacting community health, um, and then access to care, um, as other safety nets reduce services as well. So, and the next slide, you can see here that, uh, that we have, um, enjoyed surpluses the last few years, uh, with revenues exceeding expenses, um, but, uh, that's projected to change as you can see, um, as we, uh, look to additional salary increases, supply cost inflation, and the, uh, potential, uh, additional Medicaid cuts that we've, uh, been talking about. So as we move into the, the, uh, the, the budget for healthcare services and how, and the health plan, uh, the first things that we look to do is establish our volumes, um, uh, establish our assumptions, so we, so we know where we're coming in from a revenue point of view, so we can understand what, uh, level of expenses, uh, we can support. So those budget assumptions, so starting with the FY25 actual and projected, uh, results for the year, um, as our baseline, and then from there, we, um, added a, uh, ten percent, uh, reflected the ten percent expense reduction, uh, plan carryover. So, um, in order to close the fiscal '25 gap, um, every department, um, was, uh, was reviewing their expenses and, um, approximately a hundred and ten million dollar, um, gap for FY25, um, uh, it was, was worked, um, was reviewed, um, at an expense level so we could close that gap. This carries over to fiscal '26. Um, in addition, we have additional, um, GI and Crisis Stabilization Center volume at Providence. We have a four percent charge master increase, uh, to, uh, to market rates. We, uh, have, we anticipate Medicare and Medicaid rate increases, um, as well as, uh, increases in the county care capitation rate. We also expect, uh, natural salary progression based on historical trends, and we're also expecting the county care membership, uh, to decline, um, to three hundred and sixty-two thousand due to the HBIA and other, um, state program changes. So as I move to our volumes here, we have, um, for the most part, most of our volumes are staying pretty flat. We do have additional surgical cases increasing at Providence, uh, related to GI, um, so, uh, gastro, um, volumes there. Um, we anticipate ER visits, uh, to be lower than FY25 budget, uh, because we don't have the volumes associated with new arrivals. However, we're protect, or budgeting, rather, FY26 flat to FY25 as we might see some increase in the ER, uh, visits as patients, uh, who have lost coverage, um, seek care through the ER. Um, and then, uh, pointing out, uh, as well, the average daily census at Stroger, um, decreasing from projected three twenty-six, uh, to three, to three oh-six, uh, but we have, um, seen some improvements in length of stay, um, at Stroger, um, which is, uh, would be, uh, driving that, uh, average daily census a bit lower. So on the next slide, um, so we are coming in at five point one four four, uh, billion, um, on the revenue side. And so as we look at the, the sources of that, uh, revenue, um, we have net patient service revenue, uh, decreasing, uh, from the FY25 budget by two hundred and sixty-four million due to the Medicaid impacts, uh, that we've mentioned already, um, in other words, redetermination and, uh, and the elimination of HBIA, and, uh, this is just the overall payer mix shift from Medicaid to private payer. Uh, governmental support, so DISH, BIPA, GME directed payments overall, um, increased due to the directed payments being under budgeted in FY25. Um, however, BIPA and GME all budgeted flat for, uh, FY26. Um, highlighting here that we are not, um, we are not budgeting any DISH cuts, um, so, uh, uh, just reiterating from, from earlier, um, we'll find out, uh, what's happening with DISH in the next couple of months, but, uh, we aren't currently budgeting any of those Health plan services, uh, membership de, uh, we will expect to see membership decreases, um, but rate increases, um, overall, um, so having, uh, the overall impact, um, of that, that number increasing, we'll talk a little bit more, uh, about that here in a minute. Uh, we expect our tax allocation, um, to, uh, to increase, uh, so the county has agreed to, um, increase the tax allocation mostly to cover the ARPA, uh, positions that, uh, that are coming over to the health system. And then last but not least, we have, uh, other revenue that's, uh, declining by about nine million, um, which is mostly retail pharmacy-related, uh, as we do expect the, uh, the federal and state policy changes to, to impact that, uh, revenue stream as So the next slide, um, yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, next slide, the, uh, expenses, as you can see, coming in, uh, five point one four four billion as well. Um, of course balancing our budgets, um, and as you, as we work, uh, as you can see overall, um, by fund, um, we have, we've got quite a few, uh, decreases, um, and again, those are the, uh, the expenses coming out of the health system in order to, to close the budget gap, um, carrying over from FY25 to FY26. And then we have the health plan services, um, that, uh, is adding, um, two hundred and ten million, um, in expense, um, and that'll become a little bit more clear as to what's happening there, um, in a couple more slides. But then also wanted, wanted to point out, uh, FTEs, uh, you can see that we are, um, overall increasing by a hundred and ten FTEs, which again is mostly the ARPA positions, uh, coming over to the health system. So another, the next slide here, um, budget at a glance, this is our, this is our waterfall, so we're working, uh, again, from, from left to right here, but you can see the, um, the expense reductions, um, in green, which again reflect the expenses, um, that we have to take out of the health system in order, um, to, to balance to the budget. Um, and roughly the two hundred million that we're, we're taking out of the, the various areas, um, including, uh, position freeze, uh, contract labor, and then some supply cost, um, overall is being, uh, put back in, uh, by the medical claims cost that we expect to see on the county care side. So overall, the expense, uh, uh, the expense side of things is decreasing by about only two million. And with that, I'll, uh, hand it over to Joe to go through the, uh, individual funds.
Thank you very much. Joe Francois, the Budget Director here at CCH, and we'll be reviewing, uh, each of the, uh, changes at each of our offices or sites. Um, so beginning, uh, overlooking at Stroger, it is looking at a one hundred and twenty-nine million dollar in, uh, decrease as compared to FY25 budget, uh, which does include an increase of thirty-six FTEs. Uh, that increase in FTEs are primarily related around ARPA, so those, some of the, uh, ARPA and Special Purpose Fund positions are rolling over onto the corporate budget, um, so you'll see that addition right over there, but in that, it still, uh, equates to a hundred and twenty-nine million dollar decrease. Um, as you'll be hearing me say, uh, over the next couple of slides, um, the budget includes a ten percent reduction plan, which again began, uh, halfway through FY25, uh, due to, uh, redetermination and HBIA, and HBIA, uh, elimination. So we've started in the middle of this year to reduce our funds by ten percent, and it carries over into next year. Um, in addition, Stroger budget has a targeted focus, uh, focus on reducing agency utilization, particularly around, uh, nursing, pharmacy, environmental services, telecommunications, and laboratory services. In addition, uh, CCH will continue its multi-year investments in strategic initiatives related to service line expansions for OB-GYN, cardiology, neurology, oncology, and the cancer center. Um, further, uh, the Stroger budget also includes, uh, investment into, uh, other facility improvements around the hospital system, which includes, um, an MRI, a new MRI machine, interventer, interventional, uh, radiology equipment, as well as renovation of the sterile processing department room, as well as construction related to the parking garage and other general facility improvements at Stroger. Next slide please. Over at Providence Hospital, the budget is looking at a twenty million dollar, uh, decrease as compared to FY25 with a, uh, nine, uh, reduction in FTE. Um, the reduction in FTEs are again related to the expect, uh, to the ten percent reduction, uh, uh, reduction plan, uh, which, uh, de- on some, uh, non-union, uh, primarily non-union positions or convert them to the PCC, which I'll get to, uh, in just a second. Um, the, uh, over at Providence, it does include, uh, some increases for the ramp-up of the Crisis Triage and Stabilization Center, known as the CTSC, as well as, uh, continued volumes and, um, additional expenses related to expansion of OB-GYN, urology, GI, oral and max, uh, maxillofacial and general, uh, surgery services. Um, in addition, we're planning for a new neurology stroke program that includes a new MRI, uh, facility as well. And in addition, since Providence is a little older of a hospital, we are continuing to invest in the facility with general upgrades, um, and to maintain and improve, uh, the hospital system. Next slide please. Over on the outpatient side, which includes, includes our ambulatory and core network, is looking at a thirty-seven million dollar reduction with a net increase of thirteen FTEs, again related to ARPA physicians moving over to our corporate funds. So again, our ten percent reduction plan is, is being rolled over to FY26, in addition to the demobilization of our new arrivals intake center at Belmont-Cragin, and it also includes, uh, some general, uh, maintenance facilities at our different clinics around the organ, uh, around the ambulatory networks for different repairs and upgrades at the clinics. It also includes volumes and expense, uh, increases centered around our oral health services at select ACHN, uh, locations, which, uh, which, uh, opened its eighth dental clinic in North Riverside Health Center in FY25, and is preparing to expand oral health services at Belmont-Cragin and Blue Island in FY2026. Uh, finally, there's the continued ramp-up of the Bronzeville and Thirty-First Street Clinic, which was open in FY2025. Uh, finally, there's also continued investment at the Core Center, which also includes funds for the renovation and exterior of the building as well. Next slide please. At the correctional, uh, at, for correctional health, the Cirmac, uh, health system is looking at a fifteen million dollar decrease, as well as five, uh, FTE reduction, again centered around the ten percent reduction plan. Um, the reduction of five FTEs is, again, um, primarily the, uh, positions for the ten percent reduction plan, and if you look at GTD's budget, JTDC's budget is essentially flat with a small increase of two positions, again related to ARPA. Uh, most of the expense reduction plans are primarily around registry over at Cirmac, um, and agency, however, there are some expenses, uh, due to Cirmac's continued expansion of utilizing telehealth services to maximize the efficiency and provide better quality of care for detainees. Next slide please. Over on the public health side, the, uh, budget's actually increasing by four million dollars and increasing by forty-one FTEs, which are primarily related to ARPA, Special Purpose Funds, uh, moving over to the corporate budget. So the Department of Public Health, uh, budget, uh, increase of the, uh, FTEs in this case are related to behavioral health, uh, food as medicine, emergency preparedness, healthy communities, and lead baitment programs. Overall, even, uh, with the ten percent reductions, the inclu, uh, including, uh, Special Purpose and ARPA more than offsets the reductions. Uh, the budget also includes initiatives, uh, centered around its advertising of services to the public, as well as a new community, um, immunization program which partners with our ambulatory network. Next slide please. Over on the Health Administration side, the budget is, uh, looking at an eleven, uh, million dollar decrease as compared to FY25 with an increase of thirty-five FTEs. Again, almost all of those are related to the expense reduction plan, where we moved some of the positions, uh, into health, uh, into the, uh, Health Administration, um, office, and, uh, are, some of those positions are converted to our Position Control Committee, which are essentially, uh, blank positions that we have at our disposal for different strategic initiatives, um, and so well as restoring positions as we monitor our federal and state funding cuts. Um, in addition, um, it, uh, uh, administration is looking to reduce its expenses while still maintaining its, uh, investments and revenue cycle to maximize our revenue through denial management of reductions, increasing claim submissions, and investment in technology to improve billing and medical records systems. Finally, the FY26 budget also includes, uh, invest, or the expansion of a Life Sciences Department, which is previously managed by Hectone, and those support our research operations and grants. Uh, finally, at Health Plan Services or County Care, uh, the increase of two hundred and ten million dollars, um, and a decrease of three FTEs. Um, again, the overall claims expense is set to increase by five point eight percent and, uh, for the per member per month, um, and those are based on the state programs and rate trends, and again, offset many of the, uh, decreases around the other, uh, offices around the health system. Um, overall, there's a, uh, the budget is, uh, set to include an average of, uh, our projected members, membership of three hundred and sixty-two thousand over the course of the year. Next slide please. So for, uh, looking at, uh, memberships, uh, in December of twenty, uh, twenty-five, we're estimating about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand members and decreasing to just under three hundred and forty-nine thousand by the end of the year for an average of three hundred and sixty-two thousand. Next slide please. And looking at, uh, Health Plan Services, a financial summary, this will give you the memberships for each of the healthcare plans, which is going across, and you can find the acronyms in the bottom left corner, and you can see that, uh, projected memberships in FY26 by each of the health plans, as well as the revenue and expenses. Then at the bottom, the net income or how much money, uh, is set to make, uh, to be made across each of these plans, which is, uh, set to be about one million dollars in net income, um, over the three hundred and sixty-two thousand members. Um, finally, at the bottom is the, uh, is the contribution of, of county care membership, so these are, um, county care members utilizing healthcare facility, or healthcare facilities at CCH and, uh, contributes to a hundred and three million dollars in total contribution. Next slide please, and, uh, finally, a short overview of the grants and ARPA. So the grants and ARPA are additional funds beyond our normal operating budget, if they help us, uh, carry out a lot of our additional services, uh, around, uh, Cook County, um, of which ARPA is, uh, set to have twenty-six point four million dollars, uh, in FY26, as these funds do expire, these are essentially the remaining funds, uh, for, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act, and all of the corporate positions are moved, or all the positions are moved over to the corporate, so these are just, uh, different, uh, grants and other expenses related to them as the, uh, uh, ARPA funds sunset. Um, in addition, there is, there are two hundred and ten point seven FTEs related around grants, which is comprised of forty-two point eight million dollars over ninety-nine different grants related to beha, uh, behavioral health, opioid and substance abuse, food as medicine, emir, emergency preparedness, trauma-informed treatment, and healthy children and families. And the final slide we have here is basically just looking at our current, uh, year-to-date spend, uh, for ARPA, of how much we have allocated and how much we have spent. And that's all we have, uh, for the FY26 budget.
All right. Thank you. Our next meeting, which will again be another public hearing, uh, where we, we will go over, uh, the Cook County, uh, Health and Hospital Systems, um, budget and also take in public comments, will be, uh, it'll actually be a continuation of this meeting. It'll be, uh, Wednesday, August thirteenth at one PM, uh, right here in this, uh, same room. Uh, until then, we will recess, uh, until we, um, reconvene at that time. Thank you.